Order of the Library Board of Trustees for the public library of Palm Springs. Can you do a roll call?
Yes, it, let's see, Councilmember Borba? Councilmember, you've gotten a promotion. Craig Borba.
Here.
Okay, David Kelly?
Here.
Ed McBride?
How's it?
Kathy Wermick is not here yet. I keep watching the, the list of participants, so go ahead.
Do we have any changes or additions to the issue? Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
All right. So can we move to accept the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the library statistics? Can I get a motion to accept?
I'll move.
Second. David, thank you. The consent agenda has been accepted. So let's go into the administrative reports. Nancy, are you out there? Can you give us a report on the friends?
Sure. Okay, so we had our regular board meeting last month and we did it, you know, virtually. Let's see, we, you know, talked about what's going on with the library. The good news is we did receive some grants that we had applied for. So we received a grant for 2,500 from the Grace Spearman Foundation and we received 5,000 from US Bank. And we received 11,500 from the Anderson Children's Foundation, which is to go towards books and summer reading. The other two are to be used whenever we need them to. We also decided that because we were unable to hold our big annual book sale and any other fundraising events, that we decided to create a GoFundMe account. As of this morning, we have $7,025 in there. Plus, as long as we hit 5,000, it was going to be matched, so we'll have another 5,000 added to that. We also, I sent out a letter along with advertising the pizza, the Blaze Pizza. We get 30%. That is today. I just got back some Blaze Pizza and I hope all of you attended the Blaze Pizza. If you haven't, go after the meeting to support us. So from the different donations, we received a donation by mail from the letters that we sent out. So one person donated 10,000 yesterday. Another person donated, well, two other people did 500 apiece and then we've had another. So I would say in the last, since our last board meeting, which was three weeks ago, we probably raised about 25,000.
Wow, that's amazing.
So we're real excited about that. And we had already said that we would support the library for summer reading and give them 25,000, but it looks like with the Anderson Children giving 11,500, they're paying, you know, close to half of that, so we'll be able to use that money for other things. We also talked about with opening up the library that they'll need different things like masks and gloves and sanitizer, any type of materials that we feel that they'll need. We voted to give them $1,200 to start off with that and of course, if they need more, we'll be glad to. And basically, that was the gist of meeting is, you know, how can we support the library? And what can we do to raise more money since, you know, we haven't been doing anything recently? So we're very happy about our success with that and we will be having our next meeting this Tuesday at 2:00. And that basically wraps up my thing. Any questions, comments?
I would correct it. You've been doing a lot. You've been doing anything. You've been doing a lot. Amazing. Congratulations. Thanks to the friends. We thank you a lot.
Yeah, it goes to show, all you have to do is ask and people will come through.
Yes, and it proves that.
Absolutely. I agree with that. Yeah.
Nancy, I would also commend you on writing those letters that, asking for support for the library during the city council meetings. I know from the Friends of the Palm Springs Library Book Club, which I coordinate, we sent out 110 letters to our members. And I think I heard a lot of input from people who were sending letters that they copied me on as well as hearing their voices during the city council meeting. So really, that was really a big boon and I'm sure that you got a similar response from the Friends mailing list as well.
Absolutely.
Plus, I know there were lots of letters written as well, too. Councilmember Gardner might vouch for that because she saw them, but I know I wrote letters and told everybody I knew to write letters. So I think that clearly our community loves libraries. So Dr. Borba, did you have a question? I'm sorry, I thought you raised your hand.
No, I'm just really excited about what Nancy and the Friends is able to accomplish in the last three weeks. It's fabulous.
Thank you very much. We're excited.
Good.
Hey, I just wanted to report that Kathy Wermick is trying to get into the room and I'm not seeing her in the waiting room, so if we could wait a minute, I'd just like to wait for her if we could, because she's having trouble getting in. Is that possible?
We could have a recess.
Do we have a nice little logo like the city council does for the library? We can put up there during the recess?
I can hold up my Oh, here we go. I think this is, I think this is it. Says Bruce.
No, Bruce has a dog.
I think that's Kathy.
I thought it's Kathy. Is she up in the mountains? She might be up in the mountains with Bruce.
Kathy, is that you?
Yes.
Maybe it sounded like Kathy's dog.
Yeah, I think that sounds like Ruby in the back.
Yeah.
And then she laughs. Standby. I will, I could add and embellish what Nancy said about the friends and that the grants that we got. That's very exciting. The Anderson Children's Foundation grant, we're very excited about that money because summer reading starts on Monday.
I have a question about summer reading. How does that, how will that program work? Are you doing summer reading for all ages or how's it going to go?
So we got a grant too from the California State Library. I'll report that later to, sure, but we got a grant to, to purchase Beanstack. And we get three years of Beanstack, which is a virtual reading program system. And so it's, you can go on your computer or on a mobile app and there is a component where if you don't have a computer, you can sign up through us. We can sign you up for it. And then as you read, you earn badges and you can do activities. And we really tried to target STEAM activities to make sure that everybody could do a variety of different things. It's for all ages. And if they reach their reading goal, they will receive a pack of five brand new books. And that's what the grant was for, was to buy the books and I'm just watching for Kathy too at the same time that I'm talking, but oh, here we go. Hold on. Let's try this again.
Well, that, that sounds really great.
Yeah, we're, so we start on Monday.
There's, sorry about that. Somebody else used my computer, so it has the wrong name on it.
It's okay, Bruce. It's all great. We were just stalling a little bit, waiting, waiting for you. The Friends did give their report. And so yeah, summer reading starts.
I can't hear anybody.
You can't?
We can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you. Okay. Is your computer actually muted? Or do you have headphones plugged in?
Can you send her a message in the chat room or something? I don't think she can hear instructions.
I know.
Oh, thank you.
Hold on. Hi Kathy.
I can't hear anybody.
Oh yeah, we can hear you. We're thinking that maybe your computer has, has been muted?
Oh, I don't know. Is there any way that I would find out, find that out?
Just down in the, the bar at the bottom of your computer, there should be maybe a speaker and you could click on that and then it might show if you're muted or not.
I don't, I see the mute button, but hold on, it does say that I'm muted.
Okay, now we're back.
So Kathy, just to recap real quickly, the Friends report because it's great news. Nancy, you're on mute. Can you report your total contribution since their last meeting that you think you guys have raised? So Kathy, you can hear it.
Sure. Since our last meeting three weeks ago, we have received a grant for 2,500 from the Grace Spearman, 5,000 from US Bank, 11,000 from, 11,500 from the Anderson Children's Foundation. Then we decided at our meeting to start a GoFundMe account, which as of this morning was at $7,025. And then we have an anonymous donor who said if we raised over 5,000, they would match up to 5,000, so we'll have another 5,000 going in there. So that'll take it to over 12,000. Then I also mailed out letters. You probably received one. And yesterday from the letters, we had one person donate 10,000, two people donate 500 apiece and plus other donations. So we're probably in the last three weeks have raised approximately 25,000.
Great.
Great news. Okay, so we were ready to move on to David, the founder of the foundation. David, are you there?
I am. I am. I will start with the, with good news. We got a letter from an attorney that we are named in a gentleman's estate, a gentleman who lived in Palm Springs. We're named in his estate and according to his will, we are going to get a third of his estate. It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't say in here how much it's worth, but we're very excited about that.
Doesn't matter, does it? We'll take every penny.
Right. So
Oh.
It says, the first line in the letter says, please accept our condolences, but I have no idea who he was and I've never heard of him, but it was very nice of them to express their condolences. We did not have a committee meeting last month, but we did have an executive committee meeting. We just, we met with Jeannie and we discussed what the library needs and where the city's budget shortfalls leave the library and we are going to kind of pivot and change our fundraising goals. Obviously, we're not, we're not going to try and raise money for a new library. We're just going to try and raise money to help the library and fulfill the budget shortfall. It's a great opportunity for us to hone our fundraising skills, develop an investment strategy for the money we do raise and really be in a much better position down the road when the new library does come along. So I'm actually kind of excited about that. We're going to meet with the city to discuss how we can donate the money to the city and come up with ways so we can develop the naming rights. And we're actually, I'm actually pretty excited. We're going to be in a better position than we would have been to raise money when the new library comes along. And I think that's really all I have at this point.
Any questions for the Library Foundation?
I have one, which is the last meeting we had, we talked with you about the loan that we had made to you and you were going to come back to us with a proposal. Has anything happened with that?
Yes and no. What did happen was that, you know, it's kind of official that the new library is off the table. So our, our staffing needs and everything's changed. We don't need to hire a staff member right now. We don't need office space right now because we're not gearing up to raise $10 million. So I do not have a budget, formal budget for that.
So what does it mean about the loan?
That's a good question. I don't know. I mean, I guess
We have a loan, we have a loan that's come due. Is that correct?
It's going to come due in a couple of weeks, in July.
Maybe what, what I would like, but this is just me, what I would like to see is a request from you to extend it.
Okay.
So can we maybe have
And to come back at our next meeting.
So let's put on as our future agenda item, let's also discuss with the, the city attorney how we might need to craft such an agreement if that happens. Because I want to make sure that we're following city protocol. But I think the Library Foundation should be prepared on the agenda item to come back and say, here's what we would like to see in terms of an extension.
Okay.
Yeah, and I have a couple of comments because I'm, you know, this is a, an issue that I feel like I've been kind of raising month by month by month. And I understand a year ago when I raised it, that might have seemed premature, but here we are, three weeks before it expires. And the foundation doesn't make a proposal. So, and I know in the two months ago, or at least in the March meeting, before we did have a meeting in April, that, you know, that was really made clear to Mr. Sidley as he was making that presentation. So I, you know, circumstances change, obviously. COVID is a new thing. Certainly, the, the change in the library's plans to actually stay in Sunrise Park is not a new thing. So therefore, the new building is not, obviously not a topic for fundraising any longer and hasn't been for several months. So I'm a little perplexed and, you know, and I've said a couple of times that I think the best course of action is to do something before that note expires. Because as a foundation, I don't think a foundation should be prudent, would be prudently managing its finances if it actually has a note that expires. So I'm perplexed. You have an opportunity as a foundation to come before this trustees and make a request and I'm almost struggling to make the request for you.
We will make a formal request in writing prior to the next meeting.
When your note is expired?
Prior.
What's the date of expiration?
End of July.
Expiration date, the end of July?
July 1st.
Oh.
And that's the date of our next meeting. That's the next meeting date.
So you're not giving the city any chance to draft a new note? You're not giving us a chance to decide anything to do with this note?
I'll get it to you tomorrow.
How's that? Are we supposed to schedule another meeting of the board before then, the Board of Trustees?
Before tomorrow?
I I think we should, I think we should schedule another meeting just to talk through what I would like to see happen. And I don't know if anybody else agrees with it. I want the foundation to succeed. I'd like to extend the note. I'd like a time period on the extension of the note. It would give you some time. I do agree that it's easier, it's going to be easier for you to fundraise for a hole in the library budget than for a new library. I don't think the new library is a dead issue, David. It, it is either a rebuilt building or a new building in the same location. But I'd like to see an extension. I don't want to see any interest on it. And I'd like to see a longer term and a term that would be reasonable for you to, to, to get started. So I don't know what anybody else thinks, but I think it's good to talk through, talk this through a little bit. The group obviously was starting to get together and then COVID happened. It's upset everybody's plans, but I would like us to resolve it before the next meeting. I don't know if anybody else agrees with me in an extension.
I agree.
But I think that's the best thing that we could do. And Jeannie had told me that the city attorney probably would like to see some consideration for an extension, but it could be, it could be de minimis.
That's right.
Yes, and I've proposed in the past that the consideration actually should be a substantial repayment of the note. And I think, and with the idea that the note itself should be a short-term note. Maybe at this point, just for a six-months extension. And, and I think that at the end of the six months, we would get a better plan from the foundation as to how they're going to proceed. I'm not, I'm not really in favor of a longer-term extension at this time. This note has been outstanding for five years. There've been many opportunities to do substantial fundraising or to at least generate mailing lists or appeals for fundraising from the group. And, you know, I know you have the wherewithal to make a substantial reduction on this note because you've said that really I think all of it, but about 20,000 of that note could be repaid today in full. You know, my background has been about 15 years in financial services, particularly as a vice president of a bank in New York. And when we have our borrowers on a note, we are oftentimes generous in terms of extending terms. But we actually want, I think, more than just nominal consideration. We want some performance. And I know it's not Mr. Sidley's fault. I think he's new to this job. Unfortunately, he has to answer for the five years of activity for the, the foundation at this point. But I'm just not encouraged at this point to extend it for a very long period of time.
So we have before us then the recommendation that the foundation will submit a request to us within the next, let's say, five days. And in the meantime, I would like to work with Jeannie to talk to the city attorney to find out what we should expect in putting in. And if we are to extend it for whatever period we decide, what it has to look like to do that. And then we'll come together and review your request and then we'll schedule a meeting before our next meeting, which would have to probably be the, about the third or fourth week of June to have a special meeting on this topic. Is that, is that be right, Jeannie?
Yeah, let's talk about that. We, we can talk about the schedule right now if you're all available to, to look at your
That would be the, the 17th to the 24th if we're going to stay with the Wednesday evening.
I would say
I don't know.
I'm
When? Anybody else?
Wednesdays will get hard for me because of planning commission.
Yeah.
Um. But I could make myself available almost any other time. But in terms of, in terms
Do we see this as a one-item agenda?
Yes.
Okay, then it, that might affect the time, Kathy.
Um, I, I just have to check my schedule. I know I have planning commission is the second and fourth Wednesdays and I think they're setting up some, some general plan steering committees also on Wednesdays, so.
So you would be meeting on that day if we chose the 24th, but the 17th would be okay?
I think the 17th is okay. I'll just have to check with Flynn. I think it's okay.
All right, so why don't we put down the 17th for now and Kathy, you'll confirm and get that back to us, but we'll
Yeah.
A special meeting on the 17th to discuss the agreement with the Library Foundation and review their plan and proposal at that time. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, in terms of the foundation, just to say, I don't think, what I'd like to hear is their proposal. I know that we may have differing views as to what they need, what we will do with the note.
Okay.
So we will generate proposals from the, from the trustees then, correct? Because I think David has, would like to propose something.
No, I think Kathy's point was that, and my point always has been that I think the foundation needs to make a proposal.
Right.
Right, but that doesn't
For me, it doesn't preclude them making a minimal payment. As long as they have a sense of what they want to do with the money. I mean, I'd rather see them succeed and raise funds. But I, you know, I think they need to bring us a proposal.
And David, you think, David Sidley, you think you can get that to us within five business days?
Yes.
Or sooner?
And I will, I, I just want to throw this out there. I mean, if, if it's important enough to the trustees to collect that loan, we can pay it back. So if that's your priority, David Kelly, we can pay that loan back and close up shop. I mean, if that's what you want. If it's really important to you to collect that money.
No, as I said, I, the only reason that I think that we're looking to make a reduction that's less, that's more than nominal is just that it's, it makes good business sense, in my opinion, for a note to be off the books, especially one that's been on, on the books for such a long period of time. But in this conversation, I've expressed my willingness to consider not a full repayment of this, but a partial repayment of it. But I don't want it to be a nominal repayment and I want the note to be a short-term note so that gives you an opportunity to come back to us and perhaps actually ask for it to be re-extended to its original partner, to its original level, but with a more solid proposal.
Well, I don't think any of us want to see the foundation pay this back if that means you're going to have $0, you know, in your account. Because I think we've got to also review any of the 501(c)(3) requirements, you know, what does that do? Are we jeopardizing anything? So I think there needs to be some, some detail to this recommendation from the foundation. Expose the books, which we, we can look at the financials and say, this is how much money you have. If you pay the loan in full, this is how much you would have left, if any.
I think I've already mentioned that. I think from his last presentation, he had $70,000 in the bank, to my recollection. He has a 90,000 note. Unless there was some fundraising that happened between the last presentation and March and now, I don't
Now, I, I don't have the financials here in front of me, but I think there's more money than that, isn't there, David, in the
I believe there's 87,000. And we, and it's not me. The foundation has paid back $10,000.
Right.
So we could pay back, or the foundation could pay back 87,000 and, you know, we'll figure out how to come up with the 3,000 and we're done.
But I want to make sure though, that, you know, even if we, if we're expecting a payment from the foundation, I want to make sure that if, if we have
You know
From the foundation and it reduces their, their, their funding below a limit that might jeopardize any of their 501(c)(3) or, you know, there's more to this than just pay us the money back. I think we need to do a little bit of homework on that.
And I might disagree on substantial payment. I mean, I'd much more interested in the foundation being functional.
The, the foundation could be a very valuable partner to us and I hate to see us do anything to Uh, the, the foundation could be a very valuable partner to us and I hate to see us do anything to impair that partnership.
Me too.
Me too.
Yeah, let's, let's get the report from you, David, as soon as possible.
Okay.
You know, let's make sure that it, it reveals all the information that we're asking here. And, um, I think we do need to do a little, I, I may be totally wrong, but I mean, when I worked in 501(c)(3), so I mean, they, they do have to, to retain certain amount of money or level of money just to keep their 501(c)(3) status. I don't want to jeopardize any of that, so let's make sure that we're all okay with that. And, um, come back with a report and then we'll meet on, right now, the 17th and we'll look at it and decide what we want to do next.
Okay.
All right, I mean, we, I agree with David, it's time to do this and deal with it. Unfortunately, I think that the, 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 the fact that you haven't met in over three months, that, that happened, the request that we had before you in March, probably the last time we saw you was before we went into quarantine, right?
Exactly.
All right, any other questions for? All right, thank you. Uh, library staff, Jeannie?
Okay, thank you, just a moment. Okay, so, uh, the library, uh, I think most of my report can go in 7A. So I'll give you some highlights about what we've been doing. And, uh, we saw Councilmember Garner the other day come and participate in our Library Agogo, uh, program, our pickup service. And, uh, I think, I hope it went well for you.
Yeah, it was great, really easy and I've, I know others who, uh, are doing it and just everyone's really excited about it. So like, I thank you for getting that going.
We have, um, it's set, we started on Tuesday, May 26th and we have checked out 757 items. So it's a lot. We checked out a lot of items and people can only have five. So, uh, we've served a lot of people in just a few days and we, we've learned a lot and adapted our system almost immediately. We, we changed processes to make it smoother. We, uh, set five-minute time windows for people to come pick up. We were doing a 30-minute window, but everybody's so eager, they all showed up at the same time, so we changed that. And the five-minute window is perfect and we're getting people's car descriptions so that we can see when they pull up in the parking lot. We can anticipate, uh, who it will be and, and it's just, it's very exciting for us to get books, uh, books to people, books and DVDs. And, and so we've been doing that. Um, but we, we did receive some grant funding, like Nancy had said. We, we were successful with the Anderson Children's Foundation grant and that will help pay for summer reading. Uh, we got $11,500, uh, our Books for Kids program. And, uh, the summer reading program starts on Monday and we're doing it completely virtually, a virtual summer reading. It's through a program called Beanstack and we got, uh, funding from the California State Library. Every library in California got funding for Beanstack for three years. And so, uh, that's about a $5,000 value right there for, for that software program. And, uh, we, we've developed a program for all ages. Uh, children, teens and adults can participate in our virtual summer reading. You, um, sign up on our website and, uh, we're tracking reading. And so they call Beanstack the Fitbit of books and Fitbit of reading. So you can track your minutes, you can scan the barcode on the back of your book even to, to log your book and write book reviews. And, uh, then we developed activities for each age level. Uh, about 20 activities that they can do, including virtual escape rooms, science experiments, cooking, uh, programs, crafts. We really wanted to develop STEAM activities, science, technology, engineering, art and math. And so we think we've done pretty, uh, pretty good job of, uh, building the program. It's, it's adorable and we're going to have a lot of fun. So when they sign up, they, uh, they can, they register online. Now, because we have the pickup service, they, uh, people can come and pick up their tote bag. And for children and teens, it will be preloaded with three free books at their age level, their grade level. And, uh, adults will get a book voucher that they'll have to use later when we reopen. And then they track their reading and if they reach their reading goal, then they receive an award, which is a, a pack of five free paperback books from Scholastic, uh, developed for their grade level. And, uh, we're so excited about this. So they have the chance to get eight free books that they can keep and have in their personal library. And we know that reading throughout the summer prevents summer slide. And with the schools being out, it's really kind of a mess right now. And we want to make sure that kids get books and that they do fun activities, then they learn. And so we're the perfect, we're always been the perfect partner for summer. But now more than ever with the virtual program, uh, this is really going to be a great thing. And we were going to do a virtual program anyway, a virtual component where they could log, register online and, and track their reading. But this time it just, it's all virtual. And so, uh, we're very excited about that. Uh, we also got a grant from the California State Library to fund Acorn TV. And I know that a lot of people have been calling us because our Acorn TV subscription ended at the end of April. But because our accounts were frozen, we couldn't re, renew that subscription. But we got $5,000 from the California State Library to fund e-resources and we used it for that streaming, that, uh, that streaming service called Acorn TV. So Acorn TV will be back, I think probably July 1st is when it's going to start. I don't think it's working right now. If Julie or Lisa know differently, chime in, but. Um, and then, uh, we are applying for an IMLS Cares Act grant for, um, that's through the city, uh, Palm Springs. And we'll, we'll apply for that federal grant for, um, staffing and, uh, services. So, uh, that's coming up as an application that we're doing. And then the rest of my.
How much is that grant?
Uh, it's what we asked for, so we, it, it could be up to, I think, $150,000. And they're, they'll award roughly 90 of those grants. So, uh, it's a, it's an extensive application, I will tell you. So, um, I think the rest of my report I want to give in 7A, if that's okay. Good with you, Ed?
Can, can I just ask a question? On the summer reading program, just as a, a layperson reading or hearing that it's been hard to get children involved in distance learning, is there anything we're doing to outreach to children that aren't that comfortable, um, using technology? Or don't have it available?
Yes, thank you for asking that question because I forgot to mention that we are partnering with the Palm Springs Unified School District, uh, to help promote this program. And, uh, we, we, part of our task force report that we'll talk about, we ended up speaking with the school district and they're going to help us promote this summer reading program. One of the things that we're doing is, um, uh, remind me about the non-virtual, if I forget about the part. But, uh, we're partnering at the school, they're going to help us promote it through texting and calling families. And we, they have a program called Peach Jar where flyers go out and we're, we, we would do that anyway. But then they have the addition, additional way to push things to families. And so they're going to push it and then our friends at the library have stepped up. They're sponsoring summer reading completely with a $25,000 gift for summer reading. And, uh, we are, um, I lost my mind. Hold on just a second.
It's out, it's the outreach.
Oh, the school competition, okay, I forgot. Uh, we are, we're doing a competition with the schools. And so, uh, we will be tracking their reading based on their school and, uh, it'll be a percentage of the students so that small schools can compete with the larger schools. And the school that reads the most will receive a $500 gift to their school library. So we think that's going to be a fun way to get the word out. And we're, we're hoping to promote it to them before they get out, get out of school this week with their teachers. It's going to the teachers and stuff like that. And then if, um, all school children have their Chromebooks and, uh, if they didn't have internet, got hotspots, they sent out thousands of hotspots. And, uh, for, for people who don't have computers or smartphones, there is, like I said, there is a mobile app for our program. But if you don't have that technology, that's okay, you can still participate. You can call us and we will register you for the program. We have a, a paper reading log, people can still do activities. Um, and they can still track their reading and earn rewards. And again, we're going to give away tickets to, to win our big prizes. Uh, and everything's just online, but, but we can help people enter that data in and still qualify for those prizes and rewards. So excellent question.
And the other question is with the schools, is the outreach both in Spanish and in English for parents who aren't, uh, who aren't that comfortable in English?
Absolutely. In fact, the, uh, we're working with the English Language Learners, um, group. That's the, the program that we're actually working with. So, um, they have a team of, of resource, uh, employees that work with families and everything will be in English and Spanish and, uh, yes.
Thanks.
That, that really was the report of the advocacy group as well, but, uh, we'll, we'll expand on that when we get to.
Um, also, I just wanted to jump in and, and remind, um, that the website, the Beanstack website, when you register, you can actually select your language, so it can be in Spanish and so on. So that's a great thing about the online tool.
And I.
Thank you.
We do radio ads too, and, uh, we promote it on English and, uh, Spanish radio stations too.
Uh, Jeannie, the last time we talked, um, David Reddy, um, we spoke about access to the computers in the library. Are we able, going to be able to do that so people can get access to job information?
We haven't done that yet. I think that, um, we're still waiting, uh, to make that decision right now. We're, we're focusing on getting the books to people. And, um, I know that's something that we, we are, we are prepping for to make sure that it does happen. Um, with the libraries, I know in the state, the governor's guidance, um, libraries are listed in stage three. So, uh, I, at this point, we're, we're not there in that stage, but, um, yeah, it's, we're, we have.
Has anybody, has anybody, uh, has the council or anybody talked with the county? Because I know the county is advocating for different things to be open. Uh, and that plans, that plans going to the county from the city, how, specifying how you do it safely is one of the ways that you get the county attention.
Yeah, if, if, um, if you put together some procedures of what you would do, um, then I, you know, I think that's something that council would probably support based on the other things that, uh, we've supported. I know I would support, you know, getting the county to advocate for that, especially if you're, you know, letting people in a limited number at a time, you know, similar to what you're doing now. Uh, but I think that is a really good resource and, um, access to computers is still an issue even now. So, um, just, um, let us know and I'm happy to advocate for that.
Right, thank you. Ed, you're muted.
And I think from, from us, at least from the last meeting I had, I know it's something that we would like you to, that the trustees would like you to do.
Yes, I definitely would.
Yeah. So would you insert that update, Jeannie, in your next round of budget discussions or just take that as a separate item to council? How, how does that work, you know?
I think I would just, um, check in with the city manager and, um, and I do have, um, s- some proposals that we've drafted. After having, uh, done the pickup service, we would definitely review it, make sure that it's still, uh, working for us as far as a plan. And, uh, in some, some of the, the processes would be that we would block off the stacks. We would block off the children's room, the teen room, remove a lot of the chairs, remove the magazines and newspapers and really just make it a pathway to.
Corridor, yeah.
Yeah, and then we would handle the materials, which we're doing now. We're, we're quarantining everything that gets returned for three days. We're still awaiting, uh, a study that's been being done by VATAL with, uh, the Institutes for Museum and Library Services to test, uh, the coronavirus on library materials. So they're doing an actual study of library materials with the virus, just to make sure that we're handling things safely. And we want to make sure that everything's as safe as possible and, and extra cleanings and, um, and that we monitor the number of people coming in and make sure that we're not overloaded. So we're, we'll look at that and, and get that through again.
Uh, related to that research that's being done, can you share the results when you hear about the results?
I will. They're, um, they're expecting some results, I think, mid-June. So it's taking a long time there and, as expected, I guess, they're running different types of scenarios or testing on it.
Any other questions for Jeannie on this topic?
Um, I do want to add, um, I know in your packet, I included some statistical information that you had requested and, um, I hope that that's helpful. I also did a, uh, I pulled out some extra data that you did, don't usually get about our database usage. And I did include February because February was more of a normal scenario for us so that you could do some comparisons about what, what it looked like before coronavirus, before COVID and then while we're closed. And we've seen, uh, an unbelievable, uh, increase in usage of our databases. Some, some not so much, some zero. And I wrote the word zero next to it to make sure you, you knew that I did, that that's not a mistake, that that really nobody used that technique. So, uh, I just wanted to mention that, that, uh, we have seen a, a great usage in our, in our ebooks and, um, all of our web, web apps, mobile app settings.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jeannie on this? All right, let's move to the treasures report, David.
Hi, um, at the risk of sounding like a dog caught with a chew toy, um, you know, part of my responsibility as this treasurer is to actually, you know, monitor the performance of that note that's outstanding to the foundation. And I can't express how disappointed I am that we have to schedule an extra meeting to actually discuss something that, uh, the foundation should have been prepared to discuss at this meeting. I mean, I don't know about your schedule, but my schedule is pretty tight in COVID, uh, with a lot of Zoom meetings. And, um, I mean, if there is, you know, I, I really do support the, the idea of having a foundation. I think because of the fact that, um, there is a need to do big donor fund, fundraising and, uh, the Friends of the Palm Springs Library have been very successful in doing what I would almost call big dollar fundraising, uh, at this point. But, um, we really do need an active foundation and I'm just, it's beside me to think that we're sitting here with a meeting prepared to make some decisions about an outstanding note that I've been, as treasurer, been talking about for months. And just nothing can be decided today and we have to have an extra meeting for it. So I just wanted to express that. Um, as part of my regular, uh, presentation, on page 20 of the packet that you've got is, uh, our current cash balance, which is $1,933,000. 100, uh, $33,101.18, that's on page 20 of the packet. Um, in our last meeting, uh, I discussed, uh, how there was a method of reimbursing the Friends for, um, book sales that was coming out of the cash register of the library. And, uh, if you go to, I guess it's, um, page 22 of your packet, you will see that there was another debit of $1,383 that's attributable to the Friends. So whatever is, uh, happening, uh, it, I do believe in the minutes from last meeting, it said that we need to find a way to make that stop. So I don't know if, uh, So I don't know if Jeannie has a proposal about that. You know, I haven't prepared anything as a treasurer to to do the accounting for how much of the library fund endowment has has been diminished by this accounting method. But as you can tell, as I guess we're going to be discussing a little later in this meeting, I do have a letter that I've drafted to Nancy Polly, who's our director, our treasurer for the city of Palm Springs. So, you know, getting some of these issues zipped up before we go further with that issue, I think, would be helpful. So I don't know, Jeannie, do you have something to say about that Friends of the Palm Springs Library issue?
Yes, on the, on page 29 of your packet, I wrote a memo to you all explaining the what's happening in that account. And then on page 26 and 27, well, 27 specifically, I gave you an audit of that account to show that the money that's going is going in and then going out. The only, the only problem that happened was that that $2,000, 230925, one side of that transaction did not happen until May 27. So it looked like, so they took money out of your account, but they didn't put the money in. So this this transaction is is changed because, as I explained in the memo, when the the friends' money comes into us, we we take the money in, in the city's revenue and for a friend's book sale and things like that, which is in the memo. And we, it goes into the city, it goes into a revenue account. And the way we used to do it is we would just ask them to cut a check straight to the friends. And the finance department determined that that was bad practice. You shouldn't take, you shouldn't cut a check out of a revenue account. You need to cut it out of an expenditure account. So the money has to be transferred from this revenue account into the expenditure account. And this friend's account number has been set up for for eons, years and years. This is the pass-through account. And so the money has to be transferred into this account and then the check has to be cut. The only problem happened was that the money didn't get transferred in. It just, the check got cut. So there was a mistake made in that process and that's why there was a, there was a a problem. So the problem's been rectified. And as you can see on page 27 of your packet, the friend's account, you'll see the the budget means that that's a deposit. And and then the expenditure is the check going out. So the money's just being passed through this account number.
So I don't know if anybody else has any questions, but I guess the first question I would ask is then, if I go back to page 20, where I see that there was a reduction in the cash balances for the endowment. And I'm assuming that the numbers that you're showing here on page 27 and elsewhere in your memo are fixes that are current. Are you, are you saying that, I guess there's two questions. One is, will we see an accounting in the next statement that shows that the monies that were processed through the friends come back to the endowment? And. Pardon me. And the second question is, is whether in the next statement, we will not see any further reductions to the endowment from the Friends of the Palm Springs Library account.
No, you shouldn't. You should see a, technically, you should see a credit and then you should see the debt. So on page 26 of your packet, I gave you an updated balance sheet, so you that your your cash balance should have the right amount.
It's about, it looks about close.
Yeah.
So that was for, oh, go ahead, Craig.
The friends are their own 501(c)(3), correct?
Correct, but we receive money on their behalf in our cash register.
Why do we do that?
So that we don't have to have two cash registers and they don't, and we don't have have to store their money on hand and they would have to come in and get it every day. We just receive it on their behalf and then it goes through our financial process and then we cut a check.
And why does it go through our account as opposed to going through the city's?
That I don't know, except that I just, I would guess that because this account's been set up this way forever, as far as, I don't know how long this account has been set up this way, but I, as I've been here seven years and this account has been here the entire time. So I know that, I would assume that this has been done this way and they associated the friends, the trust fund in this manner.
So because you receive funds for them, this is why we have to do this. Is that correct?
Yeah, an alternative solution would be that they, we would have to set up a second cash register and run their money separate. We did, the other situation is that we receive credit card transactions for them through this man, I mean, it'd just be doubly complicated for us to to receive money on their with their used book sales and USB purchases and earbuds and things like that. So it's a simplified process on our end. But I've been to other, you know, my other job, we had two cash registers, but then we had to store their money. And then there's a risk with cash being being stored on the premises. And we don't want that city, we don't want that liability, we don't want the risk to have the money laying around in in our place.
So it doesn't lay around because the city picks the money up?
Yes.
Now, it's, it's too bad that it shows up on the trust budget.
Normally, what what would happen is you would, you would see the credit first. Are we having an earthquake?
I think we are, yeah.
Yeah, we're having an earthquake.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the floor's shaking and my chandeliers are shaking.
Wow. A Zoom earthquake, it's a first.
Yeah.
I was at a cocktail party, Zoom cocktail party that we have.
It happened.
I I guess, you know, what is all, and I said this before, I I know this is the way we've always done it, but these, how long have they happened? I mean, have they happened before? I mean, are they, you know, so that that concerns me that we, you know, we haven't been watching it. And could there be a substantial amount of money that has been, we're not accounting for?
No, what's happened before is that we we used to cut the money, we used to cut a check straight from the revenue account, which was not your account. It was just a, it was a deposit account. So the, all the money goes in. And we would, the city would just issue the check straight from that account. And they realized that that was not the proper procedure and they said, you need to transfer the money into an account, an expenditure account. And this is the account number that we were told to use. So this is all a new process. And technically, the money should go into your account first and then the check would go right back out, which should have no impact whatsoever to you because the money should go in first. We just had one, a mistake happen and the money went out before it came in. So there was an impact one time for $2,300. So the future process is that we plan to watch to make sure the money goes through first. So there is no loss to you whatsoever. So we would, what we would, our process now, instead of just trusting that it will all work out perfectly, is that we're going to watch it, we're going to make sure that the money goes through before we request the check.
Yeah, and I and I'll go back. I haven't, I admit that I haven't gone back and looked at all the the last year's worth of statements to see what what's been going on, but I'll make an effort to do that for the next meeting.
On page 27 is the entire year's worth of transactions and it just started in February. So it only started in February.
Thank you.
So it's it's just a new process and the second time we did it, there was a mistake. So we've only done it three times. So now we know to watch it to make sure that everything goes properly in the proper process and it shouldn't, it should not impact you at all.
So that's all I have from the treasurer's report, considering that I'm expecting to discuss my letter on page 30 of the packet, probably later in the agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Probably in Trust Fund Financial 7B.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, David. Do we need, we don't, we don't vote to accept this report, it's just, it's standing.
It's information. We probably should vote on the quarterly reports.
So the first, well, the quarterly report would be this one, correct?
I'm uncertain about that. And if we don't have something that actually has a quarter's worth of financials necessarily, it's just a date and time.
Yeah, we're running total.
What would you recommend, Dave?
Well, it's up to the trustees. I mean, do we want to do a quarterly report? You know, I I think at some point, when I came on, it wasn't really much of a treasurer's report ever done. So I've been doing, probably taking up a lot of your time, to be honest. Sorry about that.
I don't think so.
I think it's time well spent. What about if we have a semi-annual that we would vote on? Many of the other organizations I'm familiar with do a, do it that way.
Yeah, you know, the thing is, you know, I, this accounting system that we've got here doesn't seem to lend itself to actually making a request, that kind of request. You know, Jeannie can correct me if I'm wrong on that one, but, you know, it would, it would take somebody with a bit of accounting skills to do that and we don't employ such a person. I mean, I wouldn't mind to take a stab at it, but it would be, I think, for our purposes, probably the most important thing is to kind of, I mean, if you want to do this, it's just a matter of saying, just an accounting of what what the inflows and the outflows to the endowment have been. And there really aren't that many inflows or outflows. So it probably could be something I could put together pretty quickly.
So are we requesting that the treasurer do a semi-annual report that we would vote on? Is that what we're suggesting?
Shoot. We do vote on.
Okay.
Oh, I was thinking, I was, I'm not sure, have we voted on an annual report? I don't think we have, have we?
An annual financial report, no.
Maybe getting an annual financial report, the city's books close on the, on June 31st, correct?
June 30th.
June 30th, right.
We usually have a one, one to two month time to wrap up any outstanding invoices and things like that.
Yeah, they usually don't publish a year-end report until after they've done all that, which probably sometime at the beginning of September.
So an annual report in October?
And we could certainly do that based on the the city's numbers that they give us for the fiscal year, sure.
Yeah, I think that's, it seems like it's a lot of work for for limited inflows and outflows, but doing it at least once a year makes sense.
I support that.
I would too.
Do I hear a motion?
I have a motion for that, please. Kathy, you.
I'd make a motion that we, oh, Craig, go ahead.
No, I'll second. Go ahead.
Okay, my motion is that we, an annual report on the foundation's funds when the city closes its books with an anticipation that it's either October or November.
And if I can make a friendly amendment, to call it the library endowment as opposed to the foundation funds.
Right.
That's fine, the library endowment.
Yeah, in a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I have to do, I have to do a roll.
Have to do a roll call.
That's right, sorry.
Craig Borba?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
Yes.
Kathy Womack?
Yes.
Is approved four to zero.
All right, so our first discussion item is an update of the library budget and where we are with the current library or the budget situation. Jeannie, would you like to?
Sure. So I'll give you some background about the library. The library's current level of service pre-COVID is that we are open six days a week for 50 hours a week. The library employs 19 full and part-time employees. So during this whole process, the city just basically asked, asked me to tell them what sort of, what would happen if, you know, with different scenarios with certain hours cut, positions cut and whatnot. And so the city determined which scenario they wanted to put forward for us. And that would have reduced the the days open from six days a week down to five days a week. And that would reduce the number of hours that we were open from 50 hours a week down to 40 hours. So in that scenario, the proposal was to cut eight positions from the library out of the 19. And after last week's city council meeting, it was reported that the city employees unions agreed to defer their cost of living allowances, their COLA this year to help save some positions. And it sounds, it sounds like they're saving the city roughly $1.4 million, which should save 22 positions within the city. And the council gave direction to the city manager to bring back a proposed budget on June 11th, at the June 11th council meeting, and they will discuss it at that time and then they will bring back their final budget on June 25th and conduct a public hearing with a final vote at that meeting. So for the current, with this current, the latest budget proposals that will go through on June 11th, the city saved five of the proposed cut positions, including a halftime librarian. We're still expecting to lose three positions, one full-time position and two quarter-time positions. This new proposal is expected to restore the number of days and hours back to regular service. Overall and in general, while there are some cuts that are happening, are the overall program is saved. Our operating budget is expected to be impacted at least $170,000, with the largest cuts coming from our book and media budgets totaling around $83,000 of that 170. Other accounts will see cuts, but those are the two hardest-hit operational accounts. And as far as the fundraising requests, we know, we'll know more after the June 25th vote. But I can expect that we would need to help funding the books and media account. And I know the Friends of the Library are willing to step up as well and have helped us with lots of funding over the years. So that's really what's happening here. And I can take questions and Councilmember Garner, you can chime in if you need to or. Yeah.
So I was kind of curious about what the state of the city actually getting any financial help from state or federal sources, actually, to actually plug the the hole in the deficit.
We don't know yet. They're working on it and we're hoping that we can get support. I know that.
I know that the state got a significant amount of money, the county has been given a significant amount of money. But we're not seeing that yet and I'm, I, we're really pushing the county to give us some of the money that they've received, especially because when you look at the other cities. In the valley, a lot of them aren't even cutting their budgets, like they haven't been hit nearly as hard as us. I mean, our budget deficit is crazy and I have council members in other cities saying, oh, I wish, I'm glad I'm not in your shoes. So I'm hoping, where we are hoping is the council that the county will really step up and realize that. They need to support us and I mean, and the name, the city, Palm Springs drives in a lot of business to the entire valley. So it would, it would be prudent for them to do so, but we'll definitely be keeping the public updated as we get more information.
Is there ways that the public could actually do any kind of advocacy to support those efforts? Is there, are there community groups within the city that are actually leading this effort to appeal to our state and federal authorities?
I'm not sure, actually, that would, that would probably be great and I can. I can reach out to the city and see if, if there are concrete things that would be the most helpful and let you know. I, I'm, I'm sure that writing to the, the county or the state would, would certainly help.
Yeah, I was like thinking maybe like a chamber of commerce issue, something, some organization that obviously has, is representing a substantial portion of our citizens. Would make a particularly good group to make that kind of appeal.
Yeah, definitely, absolutely, that's a, that's a great suggestion, I'll look into it.
That'd be the board of supervisors?
The board of supervisors, yes, for the, the money that the county has already received. And that's been the biggest push so far, I think it's our easiest access at the state and from the, from state and federal will be a little bit harder.
Well, the fed, the federal dollars, David, I don't think we can anticipate. Given the stand of Mitch McConnell on reimbursing states. And localities and cities for losses with COVID. They've been pretty adamant against doing that. So it's, we have the House of Representatives in favor of it and the Senate not, and it probably won't go anywhere.
Yeah, but I think even the press has been showing that he's starting to melt a little bit on some of these issues. I'm referring to McConnell.
And, and there, there is federal funding specifically for COVID relief, but that can only be used for very specific things. But it, it'll still help.
We're applying for a grant, like I said, the IMLS Cares Act grant. We're, we're putting through an application. To, to try to get staffing covered and, and some other services. So we'll, we'll do our best.
The, the other, the other worry, David, is that the city's doing this on a rolling budget. And they're going to be meeting monthly. I think we're something like three or five million dollars a month in deficit, am I correct, great? So the question is, is any money coming in? And will we see more cuts over time as opposed to holding this budget? I think this budget, from my understanding of listening to the council, is a. A moderate first step, not taking drastic action and hoping that some of our revenue will pick up. As restaurants, vacation rentals and hotels and retail picks back up, but. We're going into seasons where we don't usually get a lot of our money, we usually get, city gets most of its money in February, March, April and May. From those sources, so.
Yeah, it, it is, it is a rolling budget and it is possible that things will change. We hope not, we also still do have money in reserves that could possibly be used. But, but we did. This budget shouldn't have to be, this budget is for next year and it should work for next year. And then any additional cuts would be for the following year and impact that more.
You know, a, a council member Garner, you mentioned the reserves. Have you seen any document from the city treasurer that actually addresses? The library endowment as being part of our, the city reserves?
No, I haven't seen that.
So there's really, I, when I hear numbers of what the. City reserves, whether you call it a rainy day fund or whatever. It's, it's never, it, I, I don't know. Whether or not you might have ever seen anything that shows the composition of those funds.
No, I, I haven't, I mean, that would be useful to know about, I didn't know that that existed.
I can tell you, no, the, the library trust funds are set aside and, and they're. Completely controlled by you. So they're not included in the general fund reserves, they're in a special revenue fund outside of the general fund.
So is that something that we can get in a document form? I, I don't, you know, I, when I hear what's going on in the press, I don't see. I, I, that's all I get, so, and the voluminous number of papers that the city council has come up with, I don't see it there either, so. I, you know, the only thing I, I have received from the city is a copy of what we were discussing, page twenty in our packet today. Which shows a library endowment, but it doesn't necessarily show that it's segregated from any other funds.
It is, so in our budget document, which I was working on the staff report while you were talking. It's called a special revenue fund in our budget. And again, when, when the. Library board back in nineteen ninety wanted the library to be a part of the city. Part of that action reserved to you, the, the full authority spending those library trust funds that. Essentially in a city account, but you are the ones that control those expenditures. And I'm trying to pull up whatever document.
It's in the budget book on page one eighty one, it's in the.
No, I wanted to see the, the page from the packet, so. Page what? Twenty two? Yeah, so that's, that's the. That's the printout from our finance system and if you look, it's called Fund One Five One Library Endowment, that's a separate. Separate revenue fund outside of the general fund, general fund is just Fund Zero Zero One. So there was. There's one point seven nine million of available balance. And that assumes that you're going to spend. Whatever's on some purchase orders, but. But anyway, that money just continues, gets what's called carried over every year into the next budget. And so rest assured, it's not part of any kind of budget deficit reduction plan.
Marcus, will you, there, has the money been taken out for the well wood yet?
It's on a purchase order, so if you look on that page, it shows a hundred and forty seven thousand. And that's the, that's that, it, that was your funding going towards the patio project? With the balance of it coming from the general fund?
So it's been encumbered, but it hasn't been spent.
Yeah, they just started work last month, so we haven't even gotten a first invoice.
According to the report, right, so it shows that it all has been encumbered, correct?
It's, it's been set aside.
Yeah, so it's, it's reserved on a purchase order, it will be spent. But that, that amount is not included in the available balance. So. So you should see in the next budget, that money carried over and available for your use, plus any additional donations or deposits you make. Into the account.
Any other questions?
So Jeannie. And, and. You have. In terms of the budget, we're anticipating you're going to have, you're going to have an eighty three thousand dollar loss. In what would have been spent on books and programs.
That's what I'm expecting.
Is that correct?
That's what I'm expecting will happen, yes.
And you're also, I think, losing a couple of page positions, which are probably worth about fifteen or twenty thousand?
That's about right, yeah, we're, we're losing a library services and public relations manager, full time position. And two quarter time library page positions.
One of the thoughts I have when the budget gets finalized is us working with the friends. To cover that hundred thousand dollars. So that we would split that and money would come out of this fund. So that you would have books and that you would have some people who don't take away from the librarians. And can actually put books on, back on shelves and do the things that. Would, would free up your, your lib, your remaining librarians. That's a proposal I wanted to make to the group. And. Because we're not looking at doing. At rebuilding, either renovating or building a new library right now. And the real need is to keep the library functioning as well as possible. That's something I'd like to see us do. And I don't know if the friends would participate in it. If they wouldn't, it's some, it's a proposal I'd like to make for the hundred thousand, if they would, I'd like to propose it at fifty thousand. But I'd like to see the library have access to programming books and at least. Keep two of the, the very inexpensive positions that you would lose. Anybody else have comments?
Yeah, I'm just concerned about using foundation money for that type of a situation of, of using it for salaries.
Are you comfortable with using it for the?
Let me. Because if we take on that responsibility now for those salaries, we could be taking on those responsibilities for a long period of time. Those positions are really the responsibility of the city, not of the trust fund. And so when the city gets in a better situation, hopefully they, we can advocate for those positions to be replaced, I'm just. We could deplete the trust fund if we start paying salaries.
What about paying for the books and the programming?
I think that would be a great thing for our foundation to take up as well. But. I mean, we've traditionally participated in funding some of these purchases of, of. Materials for the library, so I don't know if that's too much of a stretch. The other question I might have too is. In my report that I had done comparing several years of financial statements for the library. I pointed out that there was a lot of volunteer participation in the library, that the number of volunteers who had been working at the library. Were actually probably helping us in our shortfall of having staff. And I don't know, you know, what the potential is. In this COVID environment to ever allow volunteers into a closed building, I suppose there's probably city ordinances about that and. And I just, but there must be some way to get volunteers back to actually be able to assist in a lot of these services. That even the library at its full staffing wasn't doing on its own.
I, I personally could see us supporting the programs because I do believe in the spirit of the money was given by individuals through the years. That they would want the money to be used for things like books or materials, I definitely feel that makes sense. I too would agree with Dr. Borba that starting to fund positions. Could put us in a situation where we might be doing it for a long time. I have, I wonder if there's other ways for us to try to supplement that. But I think that without hands down, I, I would vote to increase Jeannie's funding for books or materials. To keep programming and to keep the resources, because in libraries, as she knows, if, if you skip a year of not keeping the collection current. It really damages the long term effectiveness of, of a library collection. So it's, it, it really is something that we have to keep our eye on as well, especially in a community like ours that really uses the library. I would hate for us to miss opportunities that we're not helping her keep that collection current and the resources current. Jeannie, what are, what are your thoughts after hearing?
Yeah, thank you. Ed is right about the collection that you, you do want to keep it, keep it relevant and not have, not have. Abs and flows and purchasing because then you end up with a, a heavy collection that ends up having. You've got everything from the year two thousand and five and then you don't have anything else in two thousand and six. So that's true, now, having, we mentioned volunteering and yes, we, we do use volunteers in certain ways, but. Part of our union guidelines are that volunteers cannot do the work of employees, so that, that is. Something we have to take into consideration and be very careful that we're not having volunteers do the work. Of an employee or a person, a position that should have been an employee, so. That is one thing for us to, that we have to watch and, and just make sure that they're not doing the work of others. It's part of our union, I believe, it's, it's just part of the union rules.
Jeannie, how much does. Having to work the four ten impede you and is there any possibility of the city allowing? A five day work week for the, for library staff?
Yeah, I think that we, we have evaluated that, I know my schedule in the past, because we're open six days a week. It does affect us in a way that we end up with, with people. Overlapping on their schedule when they really don't need to be, so we. Yeah, the, the four tens for a business like this or a facility like this, we're not a business, but you know, a facility. That's open six days a week or like Parks and Recreation when they're open seven days a week in some locations. Having to work four days with three days off in a row, it, it is a challenge and so. You do end up. In some ways having, having extra, but the, the way that we combat that. Is that that's our time to do our outreach and that's our time to, because we have the coverage, we can do our programming during that time. Or we can, we can go out into the schools or the community and, and do different activities, that way we can do our collection development. Because we have the coverage to do it. So we've made it work, I think it works pretty well here, we're, we're a lean staff anyway, so. Spreading us out, it, it would probably make things a little easier in, in certain, certain aspects, but. We've made it work, so either way would, would be okay with us.
So going back to my original proposal, if I modify it. To collections and programs, I think we should be open. To assisting the library up to the eighty three thousand dollars that they're missing in this year's budget.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I have a second.
Okay, does it die for lack of a second?
Died for lack of a second. You know, try again, try something else.
Well.
Can I propose something? That Jeannie looks at her budget. That she expects to spend. And then brings us back a proposal. um, and then brings us back a proposal, uh, to us for X amount of dollars for those programs, with the idea that we're going to partner with at least one other organization, which would be the Friends, and then I don't even know if the foundation wants to be a partner in this.
If that's a motion, I would second it.
Okay. So all in favor?
Well, um, could you repeat the motion, please?
Yeah.
The motion is to ask Jeannie, oh.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, it's to ask you to come.
The motion would be.
Dr. Borba, you stated the motion.
This is so hard on this Zoom.
So Dr. Borba, repeat the motion since she stated it originally, who stated it.
Uh, that Jeannie would come back with a proposal, uh, with a dollar amount, uh, related on basically what she really needs to get by on, because I know there's sometimes in every budget, there's a little bit of fluff maybe, sort of, but that doesn't apply to books, but in other budgets. Uh, so a real tight recommendation that we would then partner with Friends and possibly the foundation to backfill that loss. Do I still have your second, Kathy?
You have my second. Can Jeannie come back on the seventeenth, since we're meeting that day?
I would request that we wait until after the city council passes the budget. Would that be more?
Okay.
Okay?
Makes sense, makes sense to me.
It has changed a couple of times. That makes sense.
Because, um, one thing, you know, with the, the budget, it, the fiscal year starts in July, so it's in that aspect for materials and whatnot, it's not an emergency that it has to be passed for July, because we will have a budget, but we'll just have some shortfalls on that aspect.
So all in favor? Do a roll call, please, Jeannie?
Sure, I've lost my roll.
Screen.
I can read, I can see you on the screen, so Craig Borba.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Ed McBride.
Yes.
Kathy Warwick.
Yes.
The motion is approved four to zero.
So I assume this, I've been a library budget's going to stay on our agenda for quite some time as we kind of go through this coming months. So we'll revisit again this.
Will somebody be in touch with the Friends regarding this, so we'll have some sense of whether they'll come into this?
Well, the Friends is on.
This is, this is Nancy I'm on, so.
Oh, you're on, okay.
Uh-huh, so, um, but again, we want to wait till after the June twenty-fifth count, uh, final budget and, uh, but we will discuss it, um, at our meeting on Tuesday. But until we know exactly what the budget shortfall is, uh, then we'll, uh, agree on a figure.
Okay.
But absolutely, we always support the library, so we, we definitely are willing to do something. We'll just, we want to just postpone till, um, after the council meeting.
Um, I just wanted to add to the way the, the packets go out. Um, I mean, the proposed city budget, I think, will go in June eleventh, so we'll have some idea of what it will be, because I'll have to get the packets out by the twenty-fifth, which is the council meeting day. And so we'll have, uh, we'll have some, what, I'll put it in your board packet for the July first meeting, but we may have to do some modifications if anything changes, but I would expect the information in your package should be sufficient and accurate.
And personally, if you need more time, I'm okay with that. I'd rather make a good decision later than make a poor decision earlier.
Well, at the next meeting, we could at least have an idea of where the council is, is leaning, right? So we would have an update because they would have met the week before. Um, and then that would allow us to also work with the Friends, because we'll have an idea, so we can, can solidify whatever support we're going to get. So that makes sense?
Yep.
Yeah, is Councilmember Garner still on?
He sure is.
Yes.
So do you think we'll, you'll have the budget that comes on the eleventh will be close to the final budget, or you don't know yet?
I, you know what? I really don't know anymore.
Fair enough.
Okay.
I think there's been a lot of different things going on in the last couple of weeks, so I, I don't know.
Fair enough. All right, thank you. Um, Trustee Kelly, seven B.
Yeah, so, um, as we've been discussing for a number of months, um, we do have this, uh, library endowment that's being managed by the city, and I was concerned, um, especially given the current budget council, uh, the budget discussions in the city council, uh, which were going towards a discussion of using rainy day funds, uh, to, um, fund the city. I remember at one point when I was meeting with the city treasurer's office, that, uh, one of the, one of the ways that our, my concerns were allayed, uh, was the discussion that there was a sizable amount of money that was being managed by the city, um, that they had hired a new manager to, uh, to administer those funds and to invest those funds. And that, uh, our part of those investments, uh, were being doled out to, um, everybody who was part of that investment fund, uh, on a pro rata basis. So if the city had twenty million dollars in funds and we got two million dollars in funds, then we would be allocated ten percent of the interest earnings for that year. So it came to my attention, you know, it came to my mind as I'm hearing all this, uh, that, uh, if the city indeed was going to actually start considering liquidating those funds and using them to, uh, pay for city services, that a couple of things would happen. One is that the, you know, that the management firm that was handling this money was going to be working with a smaller pot. And, uh, and we would probably become a bigger portion of that smaller pot. And then I started, uh, so it really generated a, a question that I had, that I, I sent an email, uh, to Nancy Polly and, uh, copied Jeannie and Ed on it. And my question was, how am I to be certain that the library endowment funds were not part of the rainy day funds and were segregated? And, uh, as you know, we were just hearing from our assistant city manager, Mr. Fuller, who pointed out that, uh, they were segregated. And by virtue of looking at, uh, you know, that, the report that says that the library endowment is fund number one fifty-one. So it's duly noted that, uh, this is not part of any other rainy day fund. I also asked Nancy, uh, Polly if she would, uh, give me a, a report that showed, uh, all the monies that were being held by the city, uh, as part of a general fund, a rainy day fund, whatever it is, and to show where the library money was. Because my concern was that, as I'm reading reports that are being, uh, reported in the Desert Sun, um, I wanted to see a, a figure that said if they, if they said it was forty million dollars that the city had investable funds, that, uh, you know, I could rest assured that, you know, two million of it was, you know, really just library endowment funds. Um, and I also, uh, reported to, uh, Treasurer Polly that, um, you know, the date of this meeting and I, and I would like to get a response. So, um, I didn't get a response, uh, because I don't want to, uh, you know, schedule extra meetings to discuss this. Uh, one of the things I did was to, uh, draft a letter to, uh, Ms. Polly, uh, asking for the funds to be, uh, taken out of the city's possession and relinquished to us. And, uh, and it's a discussion purposes only letter. And the reason why I did that was because I wanted to have a discussion here amongst us to say, okay, six months ago, we felt we were okay with, uh, this, our monies being pooled, handled by a city manager, an investment manager by the city. And, um, and I just want, now that we've got a whole different situation for the city, um, I wanted to actually have a discussion with you, uh, as my fellow trustees, as to how you feel about keeping that money there. So I open up the floor for a discussion.
You know, I read your letter last night and, um, it seems like every organization I belong to is going through the same situation. Uh, they're, they're changing their financial person, uh, they're moving their endowments to other financial settings. I don't have enough information about this situation of what our return is. Is that a good return? I'm assuming our money's pretty safe, but are we getting a decent return compared to other financial settings?
Well.
David, I think we, oh, sorry.
Uh, did you want to answer the question now, Craig, or do you want to continue this?
Yeah, if, uh, if you can answer part of that, that'd be great, because that might enhance more discussion, I don't know.
Yeah, I, you know, it's, uh, it's, it could be another question we could pose to the Treasury, uh, office. In my presentation, I was talking about how they get a figure at, that usually at the end of the year from their financial manager that says this was the, the earnings for the account, um, and then they divvy up the interest to the people who have it. Um, I wasn't expecting to get any kind of indication about what the rate of return is or the interest, uh, until that time, so, um, I mean, it doesn't say that we can't ask the question, what is, what's been presented at this point. I would just guess that, uh, as everybody knows, the financial markets haven't been doing very well. Um, interest rates are at all-time lows. The Fed has, uh, practically reduced, uh, the Fed rate to zero. Um, I think my concern right now is just a matter of safety.
Craig, when we talked about this last year before you were on the board, there was a concern when we were getting, when, um, money markets were paying interest and the interest rates were going up, that it wasn't well-invested with the city. At this point, I don't think that's an issue. On a safety basis, having worked in government, uh, funds really do get segregated. Cities don't dip into funds that they can't dip into. And I would, I would assume without, without having, um, more than what Marcus said, that the funds are still pretty safe, that they're quite segregated, uh, because that's the way governments, governments, well-run governments work. But do we need something in writing from the city that says that our funds are segregated and safe? It's probably a good thing to do.
We.
And would they be safer if they were in our own money market? Um, possibly. Or we'd have the same level of safety?
So would we feel assured if we did receive something from the city that, uh, assured us that, first of all, our concerns over the funds being segregated and that they are in a separate account and the guidelines for keeping them in that separate account are dictated by the agreement that was established by previous trustees? Having that in writing, would that make us, would that address our, your first concern, David, that at least we know that that's the case, that it's, it's not being commingled? Would you, would you agree with that?
Well, I, you know, if I had gotten that letter after making that request from our treasurer, then I would probably have a much stronger opinion about that.
Yeah. I, I think that in terms of, of the rest of the proposal of taking the funds now, I, I'm not so sure that I would be able to support that. You know, this goes back to our conversation at the earlier part of the meeting. I mean, could have, would. I wish that our foundation was in a position, that was a strong foundation, that, uh, we could feel confident in supporting moving those funds to somewhere where they would be taken care of, invested, and we could grow them. We don't have that option right now, and I don't think we're going to have that option, you know, for a while. Um, I'm not so, I'm not so sure that moving them to the Friends would also be a, a, another option. So, um, at this point, I mean, I think for me, our, our best option is to leave it where it's at and to work on a, either, oh, someday, those funds somewhere where we have more control over them. What does that plan look like? Um, and is it, is it working with our foundation to be where it needs to be? Um, or is it, uh, investigating what it would take for us to take those funds and take them somewhere else and, and us manage them ourselves? Um, that, those two options seem to be the best options in my mind, and I don't know which one at this point. I don't think I could support either one of them, to be honest, at this point.
So, Ed, uh, just to clarify, uh, you're satisfied with the safety issue at this point?
I am satisfied with the safety issue. Having worked in government like Kathy, I, I do, I do believe that the funds are, um, a, as safe as they would be if we put them somewhere else in this current market condition. And, um, I believe that having them bundled with larger amounts of money might also add a little bit to that safety. Um, but I, I, we've had this question, by the way, well before, I mean, when I first came to the, to the trustees, and I think it was a part of the question before that, why previous trustees?
Oops, he froze.
Yep.
The one safety question I would want to know is where they're being held, because funds, generally, the, um, the federal insurance for funds that are in banks is what, up to a quarter million?
No.
And, and so that's a question that I don't think we've ever gotten an answer on, is where they're holding them and do we have federal deposit in, you know, insurance protections as to where the monies are being held?
I'd have to pull out the memo that I wrote, but in a memo that I wrote after another meeting with the treasurer department, I made the, the, the name known of the financial manager. And, uh, you may recall, uh, the person who, uh, the gentleman, his name is escaping me right now, who works for Nancy, who actually came to our council meeting that day. Actually, I, now that I think about it, you might not have been there.
I wasn't.
Yeah, so, um, but I can actually, uh, send over that, a copy of that memo to you.
That'd be great. But I would never support giving the money to the Friends or to the foundation, because I think we have a separate charter with them. I think that the question David was asking was whether we invest them ourselves. Am I correct? Have I read your memo?
Oh, that's, no, no. Uh, my, my concern is whether or not we're satisfied with the, the responses that we've received from the city regarding, uh, the segregation of the funds.
Well, we had Mr. Marcus just join us and he stated that to us in this meeting. Um, I, I see no issue why we shouldn't ask him to put that in a, on a reply to your memo and explain to where the funds are and what is dictated. Is that fair enough? I mean, I can issue, um, a request to him, copy you, or take your request, or you can do it on our behalf and get him to summarize what he reported to us here. Would that make you feel a little more confident in the security?
I'm, I'm bringing this, the attention of the trustees to, to find out whether or not, as a board, we're confident with that. We're, if we're satisfied with that, I'm satisfied with that.
I, I think that would be if we had a, a formal response from him in writing, so that we can, first of all, not so much that I don't trust Marcus, but I think that we can. can, first of all, not so much that I don't trust Marcus, but I think that we can put it in our records, that at this particular time in our history, we requested this information. And in this particular time with the financial turmoil in our country and our, and what's going on, that we at least, a part of our duty, we asked for that confirmation. And we recorded it in our history. And then we decide from there, you know, what do we want to do? And it's formed this conversation.
If, if everyone is satisfied with that, I don't know if we need a motion, but I would ask that the, our president actually draft that letter to.
I'm happy to. So, can someone make a motion on that?
So the motion, oh, go ahead. I'll, I'll proceed. The motion is to request via letter from the Board of Trustees by our president that our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Fuller, actually put in writing his assurances to the Board of Trustees that the library endowment is indeed segregated from other general fund monies and therefore is safe from being used to finance any budget deficits that the city is currently experiencing.
Do I have a second?
I second that. Excuse me for a second.
Should it go to Marcus, or should it go to this, the city finance officer and the city manager?
Well, you know, the thing is, I think Mr. Fuller actually made the representation. If he wants to pass it along to the treasurer, I'd be happy with that at some point. But the treasurer already has something for me to respond to, I suppose. If, if she does do a response and it comes to me, I, this is what I would suggest. Ed, I think maybe you should CC her on it.
I was going to say the same thing. I can CC the city manager as well as the city treasurer. But do both and send it to Marcus.
Fine.
Okay. Roll call vote, Jeannie, please.
Craig Barba?
Yes.
Amy Kelly?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
Yes.
Kathy Warmer?
Yes.
Motion is approved four to zero.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm going to be rattling papers. Excuse me. Our next item actually is, we discussed a little bit, but I wanted to just chime in to the report that Jeannie gave about, that you'll remember in our last meeting, we formed a task force where we pulled together representatives from our community about how we could come together to help support library. What turned out to be, just, you know, trying to find people that are interested in this turned out, I think, to be maybe a change in our program in some ways, because we were lucky to have representatives from the Unified School District join us. And, you know, it's, it was a great opportunity to explore their challenges, first of all. But second of all, tell them what some of our challenges were. And it was interesting, they said, well, wait a minute, we, we have, we have an infrastructure that can help you guys with that. We send, we, we feed students every day, three times a day. And we're out taking things to these students. If we need to put in information about library reading club and engage in them in reading, and why not? We can throw it on that bus and take it with us. And we thought, wow, that's such a great offer. So it immediately started this whole conversation about the, a partnership between the school district and the library. And the comment that came from both sides, as well as the Friends and the Foundation, by the way, they were there, is that this might be one of the best summer reading clubs we've ever had, because we're really going to do a grassroots effort of trying to get as many kids to participate. And then as Jeannie reported, you got to have kids competing, right? So the idea came up, let's, let's get the schools to compete against each other to see how many readers we have and how many books they read. And that took off in a way. So Jeannie has formed a, a different relationship or a new, or I don't know, a relationship on this air, on summer reading with the Unified School District as a result of this. So I was very pleased. If, if that was the only thing that came out of those conversations, I feel like we accomplished something out of that discussion. So I think that we could use this again, once we have an idea of what the final challenge will be for the budget with Jeannie and go back to this group, because they were eager to participate again and help any way they could. So, Jeannie, you had a follow-up call today, as a matter of fact, with the school district. Is there anything there you'd like to add that has developed from, from their program?
It was just what I had reported earlier, that we met with the English Language Learners' Coordinator, and they were very excited about this, this possibility of promoting summer reading, getting books to kids, and just the competition aspect of it is kind of fun, because the schools will have, you know, possibly one of the schools will get a gift. Definitely they'll get a gift. Just, they, they, like you said, they have, they have the resources. If there's a family that can't get to the library during our pickup hours, maybe they could work with them to do a delivery, because they do have that capacity to do some home deliveries. And that was something new to us, as well as the direct texting of, of parents and even phone calls of parents. And so we're very happy that they're going to get on board. And then, then we instantly got scared, because we, we thought this is going to be so big. That's good, no, it's a good thing. And we have really wonderful support at the Friends of the Library. And I know that if we, if we run out of books and we have to order more, they probably...
I say what a wonderful thing to have, that we can report that we ran out of books, because our community, our students and their parents wanted to read.
Right, right.
We had a partnership with, the whole community about this. I think that's probably a good problem to have, though I hope we don't have it, I hope we have plenty of books. But anyway, so that's, that's kind of my report. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think it was the beginning of a conversation. And, you know, the, the eagerness to partner with us and to try to make a difference. Any questions for me? We have not scheduled a follow-up meeting just yet. We were waiting to see how summer reading launched and, and what happened, and then we'll come back together, if you want to discuss some of the issues we've discussed here in terms of shortfall in budgets and how we can leverage resources.
One thing I wanted to say is that anybody, anybody can participate in our summer reading, but they do have to somehow come and get the stuff. So if you live in another state, you can still do our activities and earn your badges, you just won't get the reward. But that's okay, because our program, we're very proud of it. We think it's going to be a lot of fun. So we don't care where you live, as long as you don't care if you don't get your prize.
A lot of great programs in library, but I think the one I, I would doubt, really very excited about is that when they start giving out the awards for summer reading. So I encourage all of you to show up for a few minutes and see the excitement of these kids and overhear the parents and how they're talking about how grateful they are for the program. They, their fingers are crossed, they're going to get an award, they're going to get a gift, they're going to get a bicycle, they're going to get something, you know, they get so excited, and it's, it's really something to see, so.
So this year, this year, we're not doing that, because we're not a person drawing.
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
I know. Virtually, we're going to do...
We're getting books.
What?
We're getting books, right?
Yeah, they'll get the books, and they will be happy about that. But we are going to give away the big prizes. We're giving away bicycles, an Amazon gift card, Nintendo Switch Mini Light, Nintendo Switch Light, and a, Julie, help me out, what's the last item? I lost my mind. There's one more thing.
A fire tablet.
Yes. And so the prices are really nice, and they're good for all ages. There's a toddler bike, I mean, you know, you might not want the toddler bike, but you can choose which.
Top or Will? I promise you, there, there's somebody that's got their heart set on a bicycle.
Oh, definitely. We've got all sizes of the bicycle, so that's fun. And this year, you know, with the, with the difficulties in the, in the budget, we did not ask for the sustainability to sponsor the bicycles, we just went in and did it ourselves. But in virtual memory of the Sustainability Commission and their years and years of support, we're still going to give away bicycles.
Thank you. The next item, of course, I'm anxious, I'm so glad you sent us at least some pictures. The Wellwood patio is going to happen in my lifetime. I can't tell you guys how excited that makes me. So how's it going? I haven't had a chance, of course, to go down and check it out, but what's going on?
They are currently in, a lot of it's groundwork that, you know, water lines, electrical lines, stuff that is not real exciting. But I know right now, they're, they're working on the foundation for the concrete block wall that goes around the air conditioner. So the patio, the pavers have been pulled up, they were saved. They saved all the old pavers and took them to the city yard. And the concrete blocks have arrived, and they're working on getting that ready to build that wall around the AC units. Moving pretty quickly. I mean, the demolition part of it went very fast.
All the years that could pass, it will probably happen as fast as it can, you know? So, any questions for Jeannie?
Is the Wellwood closed for the year?
The Wellwood is closed now for COVID, and I believe in the budget, the, the plan is to close it, but I don't, I don't think it's forever. I don't, I don't think, and maybe Councilmember Garner might know some more about the Wellwood. She doesn't know.
Kicking her head, no.
Yeah. So I, I know that there is a line item to cut, to cut the budget, which would eliminate the, the staffing, I believe, from the Bureau of Tourism, AEG. And, but I don't think it's a permanent closure, based on conversations about some, our internet contract and things like that. So at this point, I don't know the answer for sure.
Could that be possibly a program that we want to put in our list to try to, to impact or save?
Maybe. It's a good, it's a great, it's a great resource. We saw 50,000 people go through that door last year. So I know people use it, and it's also...
That is something.
Maybe the hours could be...
We should, we should put it on our list to at least look at.
And have a conversation with Historical Society as well as the Bureau of Tourism. I think that it's worth a conversation. I mean, just like we have the conversation with the Unified School District, you never know where something could be. Our next is the PR campaign update. I'm assuming that's coming from you, Jeannie, or is that coming from Julie or?
I'll let Julie talk about it, if you like, Julie.
Hi. Yeah. So at the last board meeting, you asked that some of the funds that you had allocated for the library awareness campaign that had not been spent be focused on a new campaign to remind people about what the library can offer during COVID and our closure and things like that. So what was in your packet is a campaign that we prepared, well, that I prepared, that could address some of that. We have worked with our partners in the media on some great opportunities, but I know that we were a little bit concerned about going full bore, being in all different media, print, TV, radio, at a time when there was being budget cuts made and positions eliminated and services reduced. So we wanted to be, you know, mindful of that and didn't want to barrage the public with all of a sudden a bunch of spending and advertising without, you know, some thinking behind it. And so, and I submitted to you in your packet a proposed campaign that we could do. Now, we did do the radio ads that they just ended this Monday. So we did do that for three weeks, and we did get some good responses. The first two weeks were focused on our online resources. And then the third week, because we were able to offer our library a Go-Go pickup service, the, we switched the messaging, and so we were running for a full week about advertising our new library a Go-Go service. So hopefully you did hear some of that. It ran on three different radio stations in English and in Spanish, both. So we were pretty pleased with that, and we could continue with just doing more radio, if that's the direction. But we did get a great opportunity presented to us from KESQ. They came back to us and said that we, they would match us dollar for dollar for TV advertising if, if we decided to do that. And so I outlined that in your, in the proposal there. It's something that they're really interested in, and in fact, then they followed up with me just this week, and said that they would also like to add some online digital advertising on their kesq.com and work that into the package. And so they showed me different ways that we could do that. So there's definitely some opportunity there if you wanted to continue with the library awareness campaign, as we talked about it last month and so on. So I'm happy to hear any questions.
How much of this is money that we've already allocated?
Well, actually, I'm still within the budget that you allocated and approved. We have not spent all the $25,000, and that was the discussion at last month's meeting, was that with that money that still remained, which was around $10,000, actually more than that, I think, a bit, I don't have that figure in front of me exactly, I don't know if you do, Jeannie, but anyway, so that was still within the money you had already approved. So it's actually still, this, this budget of the campaign that I proposed here is still within that dollar amount. So it would be no new additional money you'd have to approve.
You have $11,984 available.
Is that money helpful to let, is this advertising helpful to let the public know that the library is still functioning?
Well, I think that was the question that you guys raised at the last board meeting, that you wanted the public to know even more, the resources, the online digital library card we were offering, and now we have pickup services up. That was something that you guys had said, oh, we should continue, and you asked me to look into. So that's, this is my answer to that.
So trustees would be like for her to continue to spend the money in this area, and the idea she's presented to us would be like for that to happen? I think this is really important.
Is it helpful for the public to know that we've got services? Is, have we saturated the public? Do they know that the library's functioning? That's a question to Jeannie.
No, I would say no. People call us every day to say, are you open? So they're not, I mean, there are a lot of people that, that have these ads or haven't seen this information. Just one thing that I've noticed, it's the marquee in front of the library still says that it's closed, and I feel like that's a little bit confusing, since you are open for picking up books. That might be a little misleading for some people. Thank you for the feedback. Where, I do have, I can change that for sure, because we, there is one slide that does say that we're, that pickup service is available. So, yeah, that I wanted to, I know that there was some, also some information from the downtown organizations that, or Main Street, that they were asking possibly if we could put some information about masks, face coverings and things, which we do have some information on there about, for COVID tips, but in English and Spanish. And, but yeah, I can work on that to make it more clear. So, yeah, and I think the, one thing that I wanted to add too, was that I, as Julie mentioned, there's a concern that we don't want to seem like we're being extravagant and spending a lot of money on things. So I think that maybe they should add some information that these, these spots are being paid for by the Library Board of Trustees or, or something. We'll know that the money's coming from that and not from the city.
Yeah, and that, and that was in the proposal that we would do that, if we decided to proceed, like, for instance, with TV, that would be very important to do. But again, it's part of the money you guys had approved for an awareness campaign, but if you want to pause on that now, given the situation, that's fine too. I was just responding to your request from last month.
Any, any feedback at this point? Any direction we want to give staff?
Ed, what do you think? You're, you're a librarian. What's your view on this?
I don't think you can have too much publicity, too much information out there. I mean, everyone, I, I think that we put the money aside to make, for awareness, let's spend it. You know, let's, let's get the word out there about the programs. And television, of course, is a great way to get attention. I think that's a great offer they've given you. I would hate to pass that up if they're matching us. And let's take advantage of that and build that relationship, which I know you have. And I say, let's get the word out.
Julie, looking at your proposal, is the total amount gonna be 8,328?
Yes, that's correct.
So you're under the amount of money that we allocated you?
That's true.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm good with continuing. I think it's important, if there's misinformation out there, I want people to start using the library. Councilman Garner, the information that you brought forward on the sign outside is the same question I had two days ago. So I, I think that needs to be changed, but let's continue with this. Let's get people back using the library as how it's open right now.
I agree with both of you.
Okay.
I'm gonna fix that sign right now.
Good. Thank you, council member. All right, so Julie, go for it, spend that money.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say that, you know, it's theirs. I think it's a great, great reason to spend it. Okay, our next item, any trustee staff comments or future agenda items? I will note that we have said that we're having a special meeting on the 17th to discuss the foundation note. And it will appear as a future agenda item on our next meeting as well. So is there anything else we want to add or any comments from anyone?
If no one else does, I just wanted to say something. I just want to thank you all for what you're doing with the library. It's, it's just, it's really such an important resource for the community. I, I grew up going to the Palm Springs Library every single day after school. It was really important for us. We would come, we would leave with huge stacks of books and the librarians were always absolutely amazing. And I, no, I, I mean, I grew up with so many of them that were there, still there after I, I came back home. But if you ever need any assistance at all, please reach out to me. And as well with, with programming, if you want to do any programming and I can be involved in any way, please let me know. I know that the high school students always have summer reading that they have to do. It's required and I don't know if there's any book clubs surrounding those books or anything like that. But I know that we always had to write essays and stuff. And it could be helpful to have somebody who's been through it at Palm Springs High helping them figure it all out. So I'm always happy to help.
Your honor, we appreciate your support too. You're always there and you come to the events and you support us. So we, we know you're in our corner, we appreciate it. So please come join us for any of our meetings, we love having you there.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they want to add?
Hi, this is Julie. Hey, since this will probably be my last official board meeting, I just wanted to say thank you. And I've appreciated serving the library for my 14 plus years that I have. And hopefully some funding or something will come through or things will turn around, that maybe I will be called back. But I just wanted to say goodbye.
Well, Julie, I, I would like to say personally, and maybe for the board, we the dedication that you've had to the library and, and the difference you've made, so we wish you the best.
I second that.
All in favor, it's a stick a little call?
Thank you.
All right, let's, anything else? You're right, you left us on, we're here waiting on you. The wonderful, wonderful zen, you know, we're, David, seriously, the major earthquake we had, you know, right after we were in quarantine, we had about 10 people and we were all sitting here. We had people from Michigan and people from Colorado. And all of us in Palm Springs are like, oh my God, it's an earthquake. And they all said, what are you talking about? We're all sitting there shaking with them. So the, what helped it was we're all about lit. We'd been an hour into a cocktail party, so it really was kind of a fun thing. But we did have a virtual earthquake cocktail party. Okay, so Kathy, you're back. Did you have anything you'd like to add before I adjourn?
Oh, I just wanted to thank Julie for everything and that we'll really miss you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'd like to adjourn the meeting and the time is 7:51. And I will start working on the letter and get you guys a copy of that here in the next few days. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Thank you so much.